Give me the regular, because those circle ones are. Well, we had to do this. Oh, my goodness. Between you and Brad, just whatever you do, do not look at him. I need to tell you something.
Box of candies, too.
I guess inheriting stuff.
I'll take your folder if you want to take your mail. Get that out of your way.
Oh, I got mail.
If I ever need anything for you this time, it'll be in there, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I couldn't get any better. I don't know her, but she's Dexter or remember, and I'm Dexter's sister.
Regular meeting of the Board of Education. This meeting is now called to order. May we have a roll call? Mrs. Smith?
Yes. Dr. Blau?
Yes, I'm here.
Ms. Heinrich?
Present.
Mr. Hull?
Here.
I myself am here. Ms. Weems?
I am here.
Have a call.
Thank you. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Heinrich?
Oh, I move that we amend the agenda as follows. Under consent agenda, we want to add personnel items. And let's see. Okay, so I've got consent agenda. We want to add C personnel items and we want to add superintendent agreement.
Thank you.
C number one.
Thank you very much. So there is an, there is a motion to amend the agenda to add under consent items and item label personnel items related to the superintendent. And is there a second?
Support.
Motion made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Mrs. Smith. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that motion carries? Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Yes.
I move to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education, Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, as amended.
Support.
Motion made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Mrs. Smith, to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that motion carries as well? Thank you very much. We will now move on to announcements. Excuse me, I have several. First, I regret to begin on a more somber note, but I want to recognize a tremendous loss that occurred on Sunday, February 2nd. Three children lost their lives in a house fire. Jeremiah and Jacob Aloria were students of ours. I want to take a moment to share our condolences and prayers to the family and to our school community. I also want to take a moment to remind and urge everyone in our community to please check your homes to make sure that you have a working smoke detector. And finally, I want to thank everyone who has been supporting the family, including a fellow parent and funeral home director, who have offered to cover the funeral costs for the family and to help wrap their arms around the family and provide some support. Next, I want to briefly touch on several executive orders that have come out of the White House related to education. The first is expanding educational freedom and opportunities for families, instructing the Secretary of State to provide guidance within 60 days on how states utilize federal dollars to support K through 12 choice. The second is related to ending racial indoctrination in K through 12 schooling, promoting patriotic education. And three, protecting women's sports, keeping men out of women's sports, banning transgendered girls and women from participating in female designated sports. And the fourth one, restructuring the Department of Education to reduce federal involvement in education and shifting responsibilities to states. I find this interesting because it appears in direct conflict with the three prior ones to leave things to states, but I digress. The Board has not yet had an opportunity to discuss these, but I wanted to just bring it to everyone's attention because I think that we need to have a conversation as a Board on these matters. And I think that we'll need to understand the needs of our community here and continue to support our goals with respect to equitable, providing equitable opportunities to our students. So I'm going to suggest that we add this to a future retreat agenda so that we can have a really good, robust conversation. To that end, I want to talk about a very productive conversation that we had with our joint cities a few weeks ago. It was extremely productive. We use those meetings to sort of foster opportunities for collaboration and lift up areas where we think we might be able to work well together. There were five areas that we kind of talked about. The first one was related to communication. And we talked about opportunities to reach out to our community, particularly our non-FPS, if you will, parent community and those who are not parents, who don't have kids in the school district. We have limited ability to reach those members of our community. And so we talked about opportunities there. We talked about establishing regular strategic planning discussions to not just have these conversations once a year, but to foster an environment where not only can we talk about areas of potential collaboration, but actually work on possible solutions. So I thought that was good. We talked about having a liaison from each of the councils, meet with Superintendent Coffin and myself to have more in-depth discussions and to have identified a liaison on this board to attend and liaison with city councils. We talked about making sure that we are aware of everything that's going on with the cities and they're aware of everything that's going on here. We offered really quickly a smart sheet that we had, a cheat sheet, which I think they were pretty impressed with, that most of us keep in our back pocket and has all of the relative really good information about Farmington Public Schools. We also talked about the library being a significant community resource and working more collaboratively with the library and inviting them into these types of discussions. We talked about student achievement and the desire to share the school district's dashboard that was recently prepared, that we're pretty proud of, that's going to hold us accountable to our results and our milestones going forward. We talked about the need to help families become more engaged and talked about whether there's an opportunity for the cities to partner with us on parenting classes and supports at the hall perhaps. There was a suggestion to form a committee to address student hunger so that we can make sure that when kids come to school, that they are prepared and ready to learn and don't have that as a barrier. Yeah, I'm sorry, I just got sidetracked. On a side note, I heard a report this morning of children in need, a family in need that was lacking support. And two children died in a car because they were cold. The family was homeless, they were living out of their van, and the car ran out of gas. And two children yesterday passed away as a result. So I'm sorry about that, but as we're talking about children in need, you know, that just really, really hit home. So there's an opportunity for us to partner in terms of supporting families like that. We talked about ways for the city to support and honor student achievement, including recognition at city council events. We talked about job readiness and experiential learning and the opportunities for our kids to have internships, for them to have, for us to work on more formalized shadowing programs and to participate in career day. So that was all really, really productive. And then we talked about school safety and emergency preparedness. This was a really good, robust discussion, and I think the cities were impressed by all of the things that we're doing as a district. And certainly, there were some suggestions for some opportunities for us to continue to train and help make sure that our students in the event of an event were prepared as best as possible. I think that it was also recognized that there are a lot of things that we do as a district that are not well-publicized for good reason. Student safety is a high priority for this district and the Board, and there are oftentimes when we refrain from sharing all of the safety protocols that we have because we don't want to create a roadmap for people who intend to do harm. So if people have thoughts and suggestions on this area, please keep them coming. But it's likely that some of them, many of them, we are already doing. We all commented on what a productive meeting it was. I think that we were all, we all left that really refreshed and energized by all that we can accomplish together. So I'm really happy that we've reinstituted those meetings and that we have a plan going forward to not just talk about these things, but to really act on them. So thank you for everybody who was involved with that. Speaking of communications and good communications, I want to talk about bad communications for just a second. I want to, I want to make sure that people understand that it's really, really important to be careful about what we say and how we say it. I want us to make sure that we're working together. I'd ask our community for their help in ensuring that we are communicating effectively. Please reach out to your school's teachers, your principals, or central office, or even members of this Board if you have questions or concerns. I've made this request numerous times in the past, and I've been accused of sort of chastising or scolding community members for bringing things up. But I'm going to continue to do that because I think it's incredibly important to share accurate information and because it's so incredibly dangerous to share inaccurate information. We've had yet another instance of grossly inaccurate information being circulated on our social media. And I'm not going to go into specifics, but I do want to share this. There is a growing trend of students and adults creating and spreading false information, sometimes intentionally and almost always resulting in harmful consequences. Due to the nature of social media, it's often hard to identify all fake news and posts. So I strongly encourage you to monitor your students' social media activity. Discuss the importance of kindness, respect, and responsible social media use with your child. And please, don't perpetuate the spreading of incorrect or harmful information. I do not accept the narrative that people are uncomfortable bringing things to our attention because if you can do it on social media, then you should be able to go directly to the source. And, you know, I just can't say enough that we all have a responsibility here. It's a good set way into the book that I'm reading that happens to be shared with many parents through the Parent IDEA Initiative. We're all reading a book called The Anxious Generation. And it explores the rise of mental health struggles amongst young people linked to the widespread adoption of smartphones and social media use and advocates for limits on social media for children. I encourage you to join that conversation. Couple more updates. Last week was National School Counseling Week. I want to thank all school counselors for their academic guidance, for emotional support, and for the help they provide to our students. February is also National CTE Month, and Farmington Public Schools boasts one of the largest CTE programs in Oakland County with 11 state-approved programs and more than 60% of high school students participating in these series of courses. I'm very excited to share that the Battle of the Books has officially begun. Our teen librarian has told me that it's one of the biggest and most exciting teen programs. We received an email to participate. And so she's also offered that for those of us who enjoy costumes and want to be a costume judge, Mrs. Andrew Smith, you are more than welcome to contact ours teen librarian. She is looking for folks to help on April 11th. And finally, I'd like to recognize Black History Month, and I'd love to lift up a few stories. I asked each of our Board members to lift up something that might be special for them. And if you don't mind, I'd like to start with you, Mrs. Smith. Not ready yet?
No.
No problem.
Pull it up.
Okay, no problem. Can we start with you, Dr. Blau?
I learned about Maggie Walker. In 1903, Walker became both the first African-American woman to charter a bank and the first African-American woman to serve as a bank president. In 1905, she opened the St. Luke Emporium in Richmond, Virginia. It was a new type of department store aimed at African-American customers to create opportunities within her community for Black women to earn enough to be financially independent and to enjoy fulfilling careers. Opening in the former Confederate capital, a city in the midst of instituting prejudicial and discriminatory Jim Crow laws, the store was a monumental achievement.
Thank you for sharing. Mr. Hull?
Yes, I have one that is very personal to me. My great-great-grandfather, he was one of the first African-Americans lawyers, attorneys in the United States. So my great-grandfather, his name was William Everett Henderson, was an African-American attorney and civil rights activist living in the predominantly Black-populated city of Wilmington, North Carolina, back in 1898. He helped shape voting laws for Blacks to vote in Wilmington. He helped many Blacks to hold public office positions in a mixed-race city. However, after the elections of Black officials, white supremacists overthrew the city government, which was the only successful coup d'etat in the United States, was orchestrated by white supremacists during that time. Unders were murdered, my great-grandfather survived. He and his family were given 24 hours to leave and never to return or be murdered. He was considered one of the founding fathers of Black voters' rights in America.
Thank you for sharing that. Mrs. Smith?
So I wrote on my second cousin, who was very close to my father on my father's side, Ted Raspberry. Ted Raspberry was born in 1913, and he passed away in 2001. Ted Raspberry was a player and team owner in the Negro League baseballs teams. So if you see the stars on, that was my cousin's baseball team. He was born in 1913 in West Point, Mississippi, my father's hometown. In his youth, he played basketball and baseball and attended Mississippi Industrial College and graduated with a degree in education. He returned to his hometown to become a teacher, teaching sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and became a coach. Ted eventually became the owner of the Black Sox in 1946, which was in Grand Rapids. In 1953, he moved them to Detroit, renaming the team The Detroit Stars. He owned a few teams, but was not allowed, as a Black man, to own more than one. So he sold one of his teams to his secretary, which was also his niece, who is still living. And Minnie, from time to time, does go out and throw the first baseball at the Negro League games. She owned the team from 1956 to 1958. Ted had a heart attack in February of 2001 and died in hospice on April 17th at the ripe age of 87. My cousin Minnie is still alive, very active, and will, from time to time, attend games throughout the first baseball. And there is a park dedicated, for the dedication for the Negro League team. He has a park named after him in Grand Rapids on Sheldon Avenue, and it's called the Ted Raspberry Field. This is my history, my family. Thank you. Thank you.
Heinrich?
Yes, I would like to lift up Eleanor Roosevelt. And the reason for Eleanor Roosevelt, even because she's a white woman, but she is just a champion. So Martin Luther King called Mrs. Roosevelt "perhaps the greatest woman of our time", praising the courage she displayed in taking sides on manners considered controversial and her unswerving dedication to high principle and purpose. As First Lady, Mrs. Roosevelt used her voice and championed many social justice causes. In the 1930s, she joined the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP, pressuring her husband to pass anti-lynching laws and gave up her membership in the DAR, Daughters of the American Revolution, after that organization denied Black singer Marion Anderson the right to use their segregated concert hall. And as a result of that, Marion Anderson's concert was moved over to the Lincoln Memorial. And so Mrs. Roosevelt was present at the founding meeting of the Southern Conference on Human Welfare in 1938. And she defied Bull Connor's orders when she sat in the middle aisle, in the middle of the aisle, rather than submit to segregated seating in Birmingham, Alabama auditorium. She advocated against the poll tax and as World War II campaigned to end racial discrimination in the armed forces. And she was also instrumental in lifting up the Tuskegee Airmen. She actually was, visited the Tuskegee Airmen and wanted to go on a flight, and they were not going to let an African-American pilot fly her. And she's like, oh, no, I'm going in his plane. And she, she was instrumental in allowing the Tuskegee Airmen to actually participate in World War II. Following her husband's death in 1945, Mrs. Roosevelt joined the Board of Directors of both the NAACP and the Congress of Racial Equality. So really, I think the world needs all people to speak up for what is right and what is just in the world. And I also want to lift up my school board members. You know, Farmington has African-American leaders in our community, Miss Angie Smith, Mr. David Turner, President Terry Weems, and Mr. Thomas Hull. And so I think it's a really testament to our community and our district to have so many positive role models in our community.
Thank you. I think it is quite appropriate to learn something at a school board meeting. All right. I want to share from Dr. Turner and Mr. Walker, who couldn't be here today. Both of them are members of the first Black Greek-letter organization, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, which was established at Cornell University in Ithaca, New York, on December 4th, 1906. The fraternity stands firmly on scholarship, service to all, and the building of leaders. Members of note include Third Group Marshall, Dr. Martin Luther King, and Cornelius L. Henderson, who helped engineer and architect the Ambassador Bridge in 1919. And he was the second engineer to graduate from U of M in 1911. Dr. Turner is also the first African-American male to serve as president of the Farmington Public Schools Board of Education. This year, personally, I am reminded of John Newton Templeton. John Newton Templeton was born into slavery in 1807. He was later emancipated upon the death of his family's plantation owner. He later lived with a pastor and an abolitionist who later became the president of Ohio University and enrolled John into college. At that time, males were allowed to attend, and there were no restrictions on color, which I didn't know, but women were not allowed to attend college until after the Civil War. John Newton Templeton became the first Black graduate at Ohio University in 1828 and the fourth African-American to graduate in the U.S. Despite being arrested in the 1930s for teaching Black people to read and write, he became the first teacher and principal of what is now known as the first school for African-American children in the city of Pittsburgh. In honor of him, the Templeton Scholarship provides one exceptional student from an underrepresented group with a scholarship covering tuition, room, and board for every year of their undergraduate study, automatic inclusion in the Ohio, and automatic inclusion in the Ohio Honors Program. I was the recipient of the John Newton Templeton Scholarship in 1995. And three years later, in 1998, I became the first African-American to graduate from the Honors College because of that scholarship. And I was the second African-American woman to chair the Farmington Public Schools Board of Education. There you go. Just a little bit of African-American history for you. All right. Okay, a couple of matters that I want to bring to your attention that require a vote. So first, we've added, thank you, Mrs. Heinrich, for adding to the consent agenda, the superintendent agreement, which we've only finalized today. That's why it's coming onto the agenda today. We've been working through the requirements recommended by MASA, the Michigan Association of Superintendents and Administrators. Some of that was a result of changes in the MIPSers' calculations, and it's recommended that any position not governed by a CBA, a collective bargaining agreement, that any position not governed by a CBA, a Collective Bargaining Agreement, have a defined salary schedule. So that's what we've been working on. It's suggested that the schedule be created and adopted by the Board of Education for all administrative job types. The Superintendent Succession Planning Committee has conducted a review of schedules and salaries and determined a schedule for the superintendent and considered average salaries across Michigan, average salaries across Oakland County, and the Superintendent Succession Planning Committee did its own review of 17 Oakland County, reviews of salaries of 17 Oakland County's school districts, and they came up with their own independent review and summary of publicly-available information. So that will come to you in today's consent agenda. We also have, in the future, a request from Oakland schools to approve a resolution around fully funding IDEA. Today, the K-12 Alliance of Michigan held, not today, sorry, last week, the K-12 Alliance of Michigan held a press release to launch efforts to both celebrate the success of Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which is IDEA, on their 50th anniversary of its passage and sort of recognize the federal government's promise to fully fund it adequately. And so they're asking for school districts to pass a resolution in recognition of that. So that will be coming in, to the extent that folks agree with that, that will be on a future agenda. And then separately, and I won't steal Mrs. Hyrick's thunder, the Oakland County School Boards Association has invited all of the candidates for Region Eight. This is coming up for a vote for us, I believe, before the end of the month. We will need to vote on who's going to represent Region Eight, we are Region Eight, on the Masby Board of Directors. So I think that ends my announcements. That was rather long, but that's okay. All right, so with that, we will move to the next agenda item, which is reports from Student Roundtable. Do we have anyone here today?
Yeah, I don't think he was unable to make it.
Okay, no worries. I went to the Student Roundtable meeting today, so I can provide a quick update. They are knee-deep in working on their career fair, which is scheduled for April 25. They are also working towards developing some combination of like a fun activity, either a, what do you call it, Field Day and/or Mental Health Appreciation Day or Week for the week prior to the seniors' last day of school or last week of school. So those are all progressing very nicely. I was really just impressed by those young people, and not just because one of them is my daughter, but their conversations around trying to, you know, step back from the minutia and the work that they were doing around the career fair and the Field Day. And really, they were really interested in talking about their role in this school district. And they wanted to, you know, stop focusing every meeting on, you know, activities and start talking about how they inform policy. They want to talk to the superintendent, they want to talk to the school board, and they want to recommend policies impacting their education. And I was just shut my mouth and just, you know, nodded, and was, I was really impressed with these young people. So I look forward to what they're going to do next. They're talking about rolling up their sleeves and meeting separately, apart from that regular larger group meeting, to really talk about what they want to see different about their experience, and I really think this is going to feed really well into reimagining high schools. So look out for these young people. They have something to say, and they don't want to structure themselves in this box where they're, you know, not that what they're doing is not important, but they think they have a higher cause, and they do. And so I am very, I left there very, very impressed. So that's the Student Roundtable report. We can now move on to public comment. This is the first opportunity for public comment. If anyone has it, public comment going once? Go ahead, come on up. You can submit your public comment now. You have three minutes. If you decide to do public comment now, this is your one opportunity, you have one opportunity to do public comment. There are two times during this meeting that you can provide it. Oh, we have two people. Okay.
This is first one.
Okay, first one, okay.
Good evening, board and attendees. This letter Tyler sent for me to read to you guys.
Okay.
He wanted me to read it on Tuesday at the STEM, but we was just open forum, so I'm going to read it now. Hello, FPS Board of Education attendees. My name is Tyler Trembley, and I'm currently a freshman at the University of Michigan, pursuing a degree in computer engineering and a minor in business. Outside of my studies, I serve as a battery management system engineer and business team member for Spark Electric Racing, where we design and race electric motorcycles against well-known manufacturers like Honda, Yamaha, and Kawasaki. I am also a proud FIRST Robotics alumni, being involved since elementary all the way up to my membership on the HackBots. Throughout my year in the high school where I served as the team, served as the team as electric lead, strategy lead, and operator. Today, as a college freshman, I am already interviewing with Fortune 500 companies for summer engineering internships, but I wouldn't be where I am now without STEM programs such as FIRST Robotics. I discovered my passion for engineering not in a classroom, but through hands-on experience, building, problem-solving, and competing with the HackBots. This program gave me a rare and individual advantage, equipping me with skills that my college freshmen don't have, a topic that has been talked about extensively with my potential employers. Yet the HackBots are more than just a robotics team. Through this program, I learned not only how to be a great engineer and learner, but also how to be a better person. I was able to have an impact through the HackBots' service opportunities as a global skill, providing aid to children in the city of La Srau and in the Dominican Republic. I was also able to aid those in my local community through events organized by the HackBots, such as hygiene drives, STEM camps, DAP and tutoring events, battery drives, and more. The HackBots are a team that maintain a high level of competition, as we have qualified for the world competition the last three years in a row, making seven appearances in total, while also maintaining a focus and giving back to our community. As the HackBots have won first most prestigious award, the IMPACT Award, the last two years, for those of you who do not know, the IMPACT Award recognizes a team who embodies the core values of FIRST and who demonstrates those values by giving back to their community in multiple ways. The HackBots are achieving all of this despite major limitations and resources. As of right now, the HackBots have no place to run autonomous tests on the robot or the drive, or for the drive team to practice operating the robot. In recent years, we have utilized the Farmington High School library, an environment clearly unsuitable for testing 120-pound robot. The HackBots have taken initiative to visiting neighboring teams and their facilities and their district does, that their district provides for them. Hi, I am Tyler's mom, Heidi Trembley. Can I continue? I sent him two notes. I know I ran out of time for him.
Yeah, technically, no, but here's what I would love for you to do.
Yes.
If you, could you stop that noise?
Not me.
Oh, thanks. Sorry. Oh, you stopped it yourself? Oh, thanks. Please send us this letter.
Okay.
I would love to, I'm going to continue reading this letter, but for the record, I think we'd all love to have the letter and the visuals that you share with us.
That's my part. That's for me.
This is your part.
Yeah, I sent it, I gave her a slip for myself.
I wish you had shared, can you, is it possible for you, are you going to be here for the whole meeting, or are you going to leave?
I will, yes.
Okay, let's connect after this meeting.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Can I point out mine for Heidi?
Yes.
So, hi, I am Heidi Trembley. Hi, attendees. I just wanted to point out, he's, well, he can write, write well, speak well, not me. Anyways, I just wanted to show you, I sent you guys pictures and what we had to do last night. Since we do not have an area, we have to take down a classroom. So we have a classroom full of desks, chairs, and that. We have to stack them. It took us, there was two of us, and it took us 20 minutes before we could even practice, and this only makes a half a field. So we're not even getting the full field experience by practicing, but you can see, like, we have to move everything, stack everything, and then reassemble it before we leave. So that's 40 minutes that we spend, you know, in the evening or on a Saturday, taking apart and then reassembling it. And I just wanted to bring it to your guys' attention, because I'm a visual person, and I learn better visually than hearing somebody all the time, so I thought maybe a visual might help.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Is there any other public comment for this first public comment period? Seeing none, we will move to items from the secretary. Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Weems. The Board has received communications regarding literacy, give taxpayers a tax break, FPSIB News, expansion of space for HackBots, Farmington Community Library, The Battle of the Books, article on the Department of Education. The Board of Education acknowledges communications and responses, and responds when appropriate. A list of correspondence can be found in the Board packet, accessible on the Farmington Public Schools website.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. We will now move to legislative update. Thank you.
Yes, in the, in Governor Whitmer's 2025-26 budget, she has increased the per pupil foundation to $10,000, a 4% increase. The proposal also includes 4% increases to special education, English language learners, rural and isolated districts, at-risk students, and ISDs, intermediate school districts. It increases the Great Start Readiness Program's target full-day allowance to $10,577 per slot. It also eliminates the income cap and allows all four-year-olds access to the pre-K programs, with preference being given to lower-income students first. In addition, the school's safety and mental health grants in Section 31AA are funded at $150 million. However, her proposal also includes language-requiring districts to allow a comprehensive state investigation of any mass casualty event in order to qualify for the funding. And finally, her proposal includes a new SMART plan focused on students, metrics, and results with transparency. Although the details are still being worked out, it includes $250 million in additional funding for intervention strategies, best practices, and reporting for support category buildings. These are school buildings identified as comprehensive support and improvement schools, additional targeted support schools, and targeted support and improvement schools.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any questions or comments before we move on to reports from Board, I'm sorry, for district updates?
All right, thank you, President Weems. Our entire school community, as President Weems alluded to, continues to keep the O'Leora family in our thoughts during this incredibly difficult time. We are now moving through the month of February, and I am excited to join our schools and community in celebrating our Black History Month. This is a time for us to honor the rich history, culture, and contributions of Black Americans who have shaped our nation and continue to inspire future generations. Through classroom activities, special events, and meaningful discussions, we recognize the importance of understanding our shared history and fostering a culture of inclusion and respect. February is also American Heart Month. This is a month where we take an opportunity to encourage everyone to embrace healthy habits like regular exercise, balanced nutrition, and routine checkups. By educating ourselves and our communities about heart safety, we can make positive changes that lead to longer, healthier lives. Switching gears to student growth and achievement, earlier this month, we wrapped up our winter NWA assessments. This is an assessment that's given three times a year in reading and mathematics to our students in grades kindergarten through eighth grade, and two times a year to our freshmen in reading only. When reviewing our winter reading data for kindergarten through eighth grade, the percentage of our students meeting or exceeding their NWA growth projection is consistent with what we found last year in them meeting and exceeding. As most know, at our elementary level, we are in our second full year of implementation of the EL Skills Block for students in Grade Two. And so this winter, we saw that in our data, when compared to last year at this time, our first graders increased their foundational skills by 4%, and our second graders by 10%. When we looked at our mathematics data, six out of the nine grade levels out of the K-8 showed an increase in conditional growth, and the third and fourth graders scored above their math improvement targets by double digits, and our sixth graders' growth in math exceeded the district improvement target. We were so pleased to see this level of growth at this time in the school year, and we have not seen this level of growth in recent years. So we continue to monitor this data as we continue to improve programming and opportunities for our students. That's all I have, President Weems.
Thank you very much. We will now move to reports from Board committees. Dr. Blau?
Yes, we had a very successful community dialogue last Tuesday evening, very well-attended. The topic was STEM and STEAM education in the district. We had opportunities to work at individual tables with community members. There were some teachers, other central office staff, board members present, and it was a very, very energetic, productive dialogue. Toward the end of the evening, there was an opportunity for each table to share the highlights of their discussions, and a lot of, a lot of good energy and good suggestions were put forward. In particular, there is, as we might expect, an ongoing appetite for more STEAM and STEM facilities and opportunities district-wide, both with regards to the after-school supplementary programs like the HackBots and all of the similar robotics teams at our elementary and middle school levels, as well as the high school level, and also for opportunities to bring STEM and STEAM into the, each school building with facilities, equipment, as we move forward. So we'll be coming back to the community with feedback based upon the, we have a, our team, our community, Communications and Community Engagement Team, has a debrief meeting scheduled for next week, and we'll come back to the community with updates as they're available to what that might look like going forward.
So I'm going to suggest, because I took away two things from that meeting. First of all, it was really engaging, and I'm so glad that so many people came and gave us feedback. Two things. One, lots of really great discussion about curriculum in general and the need to expand curriculum. And so we'll be having a conversation with the superintendent on how we address that feedback. And then second, as it relates to facilities, I know that the Finance and Facilities Committee have been meeting to talk more broadly about facilities, and I want to make sure that we're having a comprehensive conversation about how we address the needs of all of our students STEM-wise. And so I'm going to ask that the Finance and Facilities Committee add this as an agenda topic. It probably already is for the next meeting, but making sure that that's more prominent on the Finance and Facilities Committee's agenda. Thank you. Next, we have discussion items. Dr. Coffin?
Yes, so I would like to welcome Ms. Amy Sessina, who is a manager at Plant Moran, and Mr. Wes Prescott, our technology director, to the podium to present the structured cabling proposal as part of our tech bond.
Oh, thank you for allowing us to present this. We went out to bid for structured cabling, which, for those of you who don't know, it's not all that glamorous, but it's necessary. So it's basically the cabling that is running everything that connects you to the Internet. So it's the cabling that's pulling up this presentation, it's the cabling that connects the Wi-Fi, it's the connectivity throughout the buildings. So what you have now is over 20 years old. It's necessary to replace it to increase stability and to continue to be able to move forward with newer technologies. So this first round is, we are going to replace the cabling in all of the elementary buildings, including STEAM, along with Farmington Central High and the Transportation Building and Facilities Building. So we went out to bid, we got five bids back, we evaluated them, we did a number of clarifications, we normalized some of the bids, there's a few vendors that didn't include things, we asked reference, we asked questions, we checked some references. We ended up with, the lowest qualified vendor is one who is currently working in the district as well, and so we're recommending that this be awarded to CIT. The work will be done over the summer in these school buildings. We've worked very closely with the summer programming as well as the Special Ed Department, just to make sure that we're not interfering with any summer programming. And so the cabling vendors are going to be in the building. And so the cabling vendors are going to be in the buildings when there is no other programming in there. So that'll be taking care of everything. It'll be done in the summer, with the exception of the Facilities and the Transportation Building will likely go into the school year. Be after hours. Nobody will notice anything, but it's just, there's not enough time in the summer to physically do everything, so. Any questions?
Anybody?
Yes.
So with the cabling, what type of cabling? I know you said it was data cables, but what type?
So it's Category 6 cabling. It's the standard data cabling. Right now, you have Category 5 and Category 5E. So it's the newer standard. It's what we're seeing put in everywhere.
Are we looking at, like, doing fiber optics?
So as part of this, we will be replacing the fiber optics between the closets. So each building has a number of wiring closets that are sort of a hub for various areas. We're replacing the fiber optics between the closets. We're also redoing the closets as part of this. So they're getting new cabinets. They're going to be very neat and organized. It'll be easy to troubleshoot any issues that come up as well. So again, not glamorous, but necessary.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify. Can you tell us again which schools? Or is this all schools or just a portion of them?
So it is all the elementaries, STEAM, Farmington Central High School, and then Transportation and Facilities. The secondary buildings will occur next summer for two reasons. One is it's just too much to do in one summer for a vendor. The other reason is we are utilizing E-Rate funding, which will allow you to get 50% of this back. The E-Rate cycle is 2020 through 2025. So we are using up the rest of the E-Rate money in this cycle, and we are doing these secondary buildings next year, which will start the new cycle. So we will also be able to get 50% back for that. So it's a very strategic approach to it.
Thank you for that, because this is quite expensive. You know, I know that it's not glamorous, and that makes it particularly expensive. Are you saying that there's 50% off of what's in our board packet?
Yes.
So this is already reflective of that discount?
No, no. So this is the full price that will be awarded to the vendor, and then the district will get refunded for 50% of that.
I see. Okay. And maybe just help us understand what the useful life is of this cabling? I heard you say that it's about 20 years old. Like, could you squeak out another five years of this? Like, what's the risk of not making this update?
Some of your buildings have cabling that's older than 20 years, and so those are probably the ones that are even more important to do now. And I don't know, some of these might be more than 20. It might be 25 years.
Yeah, and just with, so as standards change and as we introduce new technologies, the need for increased bandwidth increases. So this is going to allow us, the older cables can only transmit so much data. The newer ones can transmit. We've got more capacity than they'll be able to use in the next few years.
Thank you.
Thank you both for coming and speaking. I appreciate you doing this. I don't know if you're aware, but the city of Farmington Hills, where, if you see the little flags around, it's not for flag football. It's because they're putting sci-fi in throughout the community. So this will help not only what the city of Farmington Hills is doing, but it will also help us as a school district to help everything be speeded up and nobody sitting there waiting like I was here about five minutes ago trying to pull up something. So thank you for coming and doing this and explaining what's being done. I know it's not going to be pretty.
It will be when it's done.
I was just going to say.
If you look at a picture of kind of what the closets look like now and what they'll look like in the future, it is a very noticeable difference. It's not anything that the community will see. But it is. It makes everything more efficient. It makes it run smoother. It makes you be able to take advantage of newer technologies.
And just to note, part of this, they're not just running new cables. They're taking out all the existing and a lot of ancillary, like coax cables and things that have been abandoned for years and just left in the sewer.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is related to the 2025 Masby Board of Directors elections. There are eight candidates who are running for a three-year term to represent our region. I know that Mrs. Heinrich will go over this in a little bit more detail in her report when we get to liaison reports. So I won't, actually, I would just ask you to go ahead and do that now.
So, put it in our board packet is the booklet, and it's got, you have to scroll through to find Region 8. So out of the eight candidates, our Oakland County School Board Association extended an invitation to all eight of them for an interview, and four of them accepted the invitation. And so I forwarded the email today to all the board members that have the interviews of the four candidates. So I don't know, I mean, I took the time to read all the biographies and listen to the interviews, and so it's important that all of our board members do this. In my mind, you know, two or three of them rose to the top. And so, and then our next meeting, you know, we can discuss individual candidates at the next meeting when everybody has a chance to look them over, and then we will be asked to make a motion and then vote on what our district represents. And then, yeah, because I think every district gets a vote. And so then we'll have the information on how to submit the vote. And so that has to be done at the next meeting. So, you know, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me or any of, I guess, MAS or OCSBA Board of Directors. I can direct you to have any questions on the candidates.
And so the deadline for us to vote is Wednesday, March 5. Because of that, we're going to put this on the agenda for a vote at our next meeting. So that is before the March 5 deadline. So in addition to what Mrs. Heinrich just said, I wanted to make sure you guys are all aware. In your packet right now is a summary of all of the candidates. It's like a one-pager that they've submitted. You probably also received emails from some of these candidates who are providing not only their bio, but some other, you know, information for you to consider. So I didn't forward that along, because I'm assuming that it was sent to everyone. And then to Mrs. Heinrich's other point, in addition to that, there are these interviews that you, if you're interested in watching the videos, those just came out today, and you said you forwarded them as well. So there's three pieces of information for each of these eight people, potentially, that you can have a look at for purposes of making your own decision about who rises to the top, and then we can have a good discussion at our next board meeting. And is there a candidate forum for them this year? Not to my knowledge. It's just the interviews that have been shared with you electronically, that you can watch in your leisure whenever you have a chance. So I think that serves as the forum.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the next public comment period. Is there any further public comment? Thank you. Mrs. Francis?
Hi there. Good evening, Board. Dr. Coffin. Thanks for having us out last week for the district dialogue. I couldn't be here. I was a little under the weather, so. Glad I can be here this week. Just, I noticed that you guys are going to vote on Bid PAC 14 for Athletics, and again, it sounds like we're pitting Athletics versus STEM, and that's not the intent. But I just want to point out, before you guys vote, and I'm not saying this should, it probably will not influence you in any way, but I think we're going for about $2.2 roughly million for an upgrade to lighting and an upgrade to the scoreboards. And if you add that to the annual budget for Athletics, which is about 2.3, so we're up to close to $4.5 million for Athletics for this year. And I want you to know, we appreciate the $20,000 last year when we traveled to Worlds, but we'd like to see a little higher percentage going forward. Robotics, I think it came up last week, is what I heard. The district, you know, we had a representative apparently say that the district sponsors at the elementary school level and the middle school level and the high school level first robotics through FLL, FTC, and FRC, which we do use the space. But as far as, I think it rubbed me the wrong way a little bit, knowing that we're not getting the funding. We fund through sponsorships. We fund through what the kids pay to be on the teams at the elementary level. Sometimes the PTAs will kick in some money to help get them started. It's a little less expensive, so we're grateful for that. But we're also funded by the community who comes out and supports us at fundraisers. You know, we did a bake sale for the first time ever. We're at that point. We have some smaller businesses, too, who will throw in some money. So I just want to note that we're putting in the time. We're putting in the money. We're putting ourselves out there. The first time I'm aware that the whole lighting and field issue came up was last, a year ago, January, and perhaps I'm wrong on that. And now it sounds like we're breaking ground this summer and going to complete this project. And I know it's been 15 years of our team. It's been almost a year of Henry coming in here, talking to you guys. And I understand it takes time. I keep hearing that repeated, but we don't see any numbers yet. We haven't seen a proposal for a plan, multiple proposals, some things to put out there. I understand it's probably going to involve a bond, because it would be a pricey venture to build a STEM center or to even add on. I'd love to see what we could do with $4 million. I don't know how far that would get us, but, you know, it's worth exploring. And we can't start working on finding the funding and finding a bond until we have a plan in place. So I'd really love to see this whole thing sped up a bit. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Coffin. Thank you for having me tonight. As was mentioned, we were at the district dialogue this past week. A lot of Hackbots came out. We had a really good group out there. And, you know, every time I'm here commenting about the need for STEM facilities or going to those board meetings, or not board meetings, community dialogues, I'm thinking about that great group and the fact that we've got this dedicated community of students who are in there day in and day out. We're saying from 5:00 till sometimes 10:30 at night. During crunch time, we're putting in the hours. And, you know, as my mom mentioned, we've got those programs in the district where really it's that great group of students who are helping to mentor these middle and elementary school teams and are putting forth all of that effort. So, you know, as she mentioned a little bit, it is a little tough for us to, you know, know that the district is saying we've got those types of programs available at the elementary and middle school levels, as well as high school. And, you know, I think this amazing group of students who I've been lucky enough to be a part of, they put in so much effort into that, and I don't think that should go without stating. And then additionally, I just wanted to note, with Bid PAC 14, I believe it was, combined with the annual budget for Athletics that was proposed for 2024, it's about $2.4, about $4.5 million, which Hackbots receiving $20,000 from the district would have less than a percentage of anything that Athletics has received with bond funding, as well as just the annual district budget allocated towards them. So it's stuff like that where I'm just thinking, what else do we need to do to gain that funding, to gain that support, to say, you know, this group of 90 students or so, you're worth it. You're not invisible in this district. Because we've got some people in there who just don't feel it yet. And for a while now, I have been in that group. So I want to feel it. I want them to feel it. And I want, as was mentioned, speed things up, get that STEM facility, and not alienate our own students. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, we will move to action items. The first action item is with respect to Bid PAC 14 on Athletics. Is there a motion, Mrs. Heinrich?
Yeah, we had discussion on this at the January 21 board meeting. And I'm going to read the motion, and then I think we'll have time for some discussion points. I move that the Board of Education approve the bid award for the installation of scoreboards and stadium field lighting at Farmington and North Farmington High Schools, scoreboards at East, power in Warner Middle Schools, and the two alternates as outlined in the January 21, 2025 letters from Plant Moran, Roll Point, and McCarthy and Smith to MHM Construction LLC in the amount of $2,25,317.03 in construction contingency, 10%, of $202,532. This project award recommendation equals $2,227,849.03 with funds to come from the Capital Projects Building and Site 2020 Fund as presented.
Support. Motion made to approve the bid award for the installation of scoreboards and stadium field lighting in the amount of $2.2 million made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Mrs. Smith. Is there any discussion, Mrs. Heinrich?
Yeah, I just want to point out, because there were some questions after our discussion at the last meeting. In fact, the original approval was for the purchase of the scoreboards, the types of scoreboards. And then this additional bond, Bid PAC 14, is for all the construction, for all the construction costs affiliated with the installation of the scoreboards at all of the high schools and middle schools, in addition to the lighting on that. Yeah, I mean, that's, I have some other things I could say, but that's really germane to this particular motion.
Any further comments?
Just a question. So you're clarifying that this is just for some of the other construction aspects to support the new scoreboard?
Right. We already approved the purchase of the scoreboards.
Right.
Because there was a discussion whether we should have video scoreboards or standard scoreboards.
Right, right, right.
So we decided to not go with the video scoreboards so that we could have the proposed alternates as actual, no longer alternates, but
The actual, right.
the improvements on the scoreboards at the middle schools. And so that was just the approval of the cost of purchasing the equipment. And so this is all the construction costs. And so once we had that approved, then they outlined what it would cost to do all this stuff and sent out all the bid packs and approved all the bids and things like that. And so this price is all the construction costs.
Any further discussion, Mr. Hall?
And also with the foundation, I believe that they put enough space in there for any type of upgrades in the future as well. So they won't have to re-dig up the stadiums and all of that. So that's forward-thinking, you know, as in what we need if we decide to upgrade later on.
I share the frustration of our students, parents, and faculty who are involved with our STEM and STEAM programs in this district. As has been told to us multiple times, we have a lot more athletes in our district, K-12, than we do students involved with robotics, our robotics teams at each of the levels currently. However, more than 90%, I can't remember if it's 94 or 96%, but greater than 90% of the students who participate in our high school robotics program go on to careers, professional careers, in this field. And... Uh, and, you know, I'm glad that you mentioned that you're going to have the, the facilities, Finance and Facilities Committee really take a look at this so that we can get some kind of actual dollar commitment and time commitment to something, something that's going to help to move these programs forward. Uh, the 90-some students who are involved with, uh, with the hackbots, those are the same students who are setting up and running the programs at our elementary and middle school buildings as well. So it's these students spending their time not only building and testing their own robots and going to the competitions, but they are also, they, the students are the ones who are running these, uh, after-school STEM programs at our other elementary and middle schools. So, um, uh, you know, at our dialogue, it was mentioned that there were 45 additional students at Power who wanted to participate in the after-school robotics program who were turned away because we don't have the facilities and the, and the staff support. So, um, uh, I'm supportive of, of this. I didn't realize that our previous, um, that what we voted on previously didn't al- already include the construction. Um, so I'm just hoping that going forward, we can make a, a, um, a legitimate, uh, time-bound and financial commitment to, to these other important areas.
Mrs. Heinrich?
And, and I just want to point out, um, this is, um, 2020 bond money. And so back when this bond was sent to the, or presented to the community and back when the needs assessments of the whole district, and we have a, a pretty comprehensive, they had critical needs one to three years, they have deferrable maintenance costs four to six years and deferrable maintenance costs seven to 10 years. And right now, we're in the four to six years deferrable maintenance cost. At that time, back in 2020, uh, the needs of the robotics and the space was not identified as a need, and so that's why the money hasn't been appropriated. And so all of the money that our, um, Plant Moran and our, our construction, um, project managers are bringing to us and, and working on and asking for approval is all of the, um, needs that were identified when the community passed the 2020 bond. And we'll have a discussion when we debrief on the community dialogue and when we come to the Finance Committee as far as appropriations and because this need has been brought to us for two to three years now. And so it's, it's part of our, our goals this year to address that, and so it is being addressed. But by addressing the needs that were, um, identified back in 2020 when the community, um, approved the bonds, we're just following through on all those assessment needs and reassessing and moving forward, then there will be additional discussions on what our priorities are.
That's a good point. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, I, I agree with what you just said and was going to add to that. And, and for me, this is not a discussion about are we doing this or something else, um, at all. Um, that's not the thinking that I'm applying to this. I do want to think about how we're thinking about STEM more broadly. I'm not, you know, focused on one particular program over another. I am focused on what we're going to be doing STEM-related to address inequities across our entire system. So for me, that, that's bringing back the conversation around what is in this building versus this building and how do all of our students get access to what they need in order to grow particularly in the STEM area. So I want to make sure as, as I'm framing it up, that, that I'm talking more broadly about what are our STEAM needs as a district as opposed to a program need. I want to make sure that the district needs are met and that as a result, those programs can benefit rather than focusing on the program and allowing the district to benefit. Is the way that I'm thinking about it, because I want to make sure that what we're building is really, you know, with a vision towards what do all of our kids need and what can all of our kids benefit from. Um, and so hearing from, um, our programs that are really steeped in this is extremely helpful and is certainly going to inform, but I do want to make sure that we're not, I, I don't want to go through and, and earmark some funds to address a short-term problem and then turn around and spend, you know, more money to address the broader need. I'd rather, I think it's more fiscally responsible to think about what is the broader need and, and work towards that solution. But, you know, to your point, um, Mrs. Heinrich, I think that, that's a, that's a more thoughtful conversation that we need to have. And I agree that we need to have it, uh, we, we need a timeframe and a project plan associated with it. So I, I don't disagree with that, but that is one of our goals for this year. So, uh, and, and we're progressing against that goal. Okay, um, any further discussion? All right, can, can we have a roll call vote? Ms. Heinrich?
Yes.
Dr. Blau?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
I myself, yes. Ms. Weems?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. This next, um, motion or, or action item is related to the revised budget. This is the first amendment for this year. Is there a motion? Yes, Mrs. Heinrich?
I move that the, um, this item was presented at the last January 21st meeting. Um, I move that the Board of Education approve the revised General Appropriations Resolution, 2024-2025 First Budget Amendment as presented at the January 21, 2025 regular meeting and waive the reading of the resolution.
Support. Motion made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Mrs. Smith to approve the revised General Appropriations Resolution as presented in a prior meeting. Uh, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Smith, can we have a roll call vote, please? Ms. Heinrich?
Yes.
Dr. Blau?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
I myself, yes. Ms. Weems?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And this final item is, uh, related to policy updates from our, um, Policy Update Expert, Miller Johnson. Uh, this item was also presented for the first reading at the January 21st meeting. Uh, there are several policies in here that require amendment, and I think for the record, we should read them. Uh, Policy 3001 is related to curriculum development. In the interest of becoming more compliant with Title I and other federal funding requirements, these revisions comply with the legislative requirement that the school district provide written assurance of equivalence. Policy 4003 on conditions of employment. The six-year litigation relative to the Earned Sick Time Act is finally over. In order to comply with the terms of the reinstated Earned Sick Time Act, the policy relative to sick leave requires revision. Policy 4004 is related to evaluations, discipline and discharge and resignations. The requirement that school districts maintain a policy of performance-based compensation was removed from the revised school code effective July 1st, 2024. Thus, they recommend the removal of this section because it no longer is required by law. And then Policy 5008 is on meal charges and food services as the school aid, as the State School Aid Act continues to provide for free school meals and the requirements associated with the same are ever-changing, albeit in subtle and nuanced ways, revisions to the relevant policy are needed as noted. Is there a motion? Mrs. Heinrich?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the Policy Board Governance Committee recommendations as noted in the comments section, Miller Johnson's Policy Manual Update Memo, November 14th, 2024, as presented for the following policies. Policy 3001, curriculum development. Policy 4003, conditions of employment. Policy 4004, evaluations, discipline and discharge, resignations. And Policy 5008, meal charge, food services.
Support. Motion made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Mrs. Smith to approve the Miller Johnson policy updates. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Smith, can we have a roll call vote again? Dr. Blau?
Yes.
Ms. Heinrich?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
I myself, yes. Ms. Weems?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We will now move to the consent agenda. Yes, Mrs. Heinrich?
I move to approve the consent agenda. Um, A, approval of minutes, January 21, 2025 regular meeting. Two, February 4th, 2025, community board dialogues. And C, personnel items, one superintendent contract.
Support. Motion to approve the consent agenda made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Mrs. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any discuss, any abstentions? Any noes? That motion passes, thank you. Uh, now, any other reports from board representatives? Yes, Mrs. Heinrich?
Um, I have two reports. I have one on the PTA Council. They met last night, February 10th. Um, I want to thank our PTA members for all the work that they do for our schools and supporting our students. Um, it's a very well-run meeting. We had, um, reports from, uh, Dr. Coffin, and, um, she shared how she's getting her message out with the community groups and talked about work with, um, One School One Book coming up, her work with FAPN, um, improved commu- communications. We had a report from Santoria Shepherd, the president of FAPN, and she shared the bit mission and information on Saturday tutoring and also shared that they're, um, going to host a workshop in conduct, in conjunction with the district on how to navigate 504 things as a result of regular communications with Dr. Coffin. Um, Erin Lutz, uh, reported on advocacy and, um, Michigan PTA is going to have an advocacy day in May, they're waiting for the legislatures. Um, Nancy Jennings, uh, reported on communications. The Founder Day Dinner is March 10th. And every school honors, honors someone from their school that has gone above and beyond supporting their students. Um, Fridays are anti-Bowling days, and so, um, the staff and students are asked to wear purple on Fridays. Um, the elementary update was by Robin Becazone. Um, she gave a lot of positive feedback, talked about kindergarten and young fives regis, um, registration. Um, fifth graders are actually going into the middle schools, um, learning about instruments to play. And she talked about, um, spring conferences and our book, book fairs coming up in March. And Monica Nima gave the secondary update. Um, North Farmington High School is having a Spirit Week for Black History Month. Um, both the high schools, Farmington and Farmington High School have had incoming freshman orientation, which my grandson is going to with his parents. I can't believe I only have a high school grandchild. Um, yes, I miss being young. Uh, let's see, and, um, they're working on scheduling, um, student achievements and, oh, Farmington Community, Farmington Central High School is, has a collaborative design mural that is actually going to be painted on buildings in downtown Detroit in the spring.
Nice.
So, um, yeah.
Actually saw an advertisement for that calling on folks who are interested to, um, submit, and I, I, it's really nice to hear that, um, Farmington Public Schools got chosen to do that. That's great.
Yeah, so they're, they designed the mural, but they don't actually paint it, do they? They have professional painters? Oh, they do, they go and paint?
Yep.
Wow.
They rotate, they rotate students.
Yeah. And they actually go and paint?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome. That's even more awesome, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Invite someone to tape that. Okay, so that, that, that's a, a really nice group and, um, we really appreciate the support. Um, I also have a, a report on the Oakland County School Board Association Meeting was January 29th, and, um, it was attended by myself and Dr. Blau, um, Mr. Hall and our superintendent, Dr. Coffin. Um, and really, you know, we have, um, out of 26, out of, there were 26 districts in attendance and only three there are absent. So, um, I shared, I forwarded all the information to our fellow board members on the presentations, but we had a nice presentation on what Oakland Schools does. And we also, the keynote presentation was on the key work of school boards, and it's just a nice reminder of all the work that we do and, um, appreciate opportunity to serve. So that is it. And our next Oakland County School Board Association meeting, the invitation is out and it's going to be at one of the, um, um, CTE campuses, the one out in Clarkston. And so we'll have a tour of the campus and the, um, dinner will be actually prepared by the culinary students. And so it's, yeah, and all scoreboard members are invited, so I would encourage my fellow board members to mark the date on the calendar and, uh, participate if possible.
Is it April 2nd?
It's April 2nd? Yeah, I don't have the date, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other reports from board representatives? All right, seeing none, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.